Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on March 3, 2022. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of meeting has been given by prominently posting the amended resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2022 through January 2023. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 7, 2022. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 14, 2022 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice that this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, PrincetonNJ.gov/calendar. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the continuing state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom. Was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. We also decided at our session last week that we would take questions from the public for witnesses after each witness. I believe that's something that we settled on. So we'll do that tonight. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking the little hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, will you give us a roll call, please?
Capazoli. I'm here.
Mr. Chow.
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen.
What happened to Mr. Cohen? Oh, there he is.
He's here, but he's muted.
Muted. I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Ms. Sacks.
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Bodikheimer.
Yeah.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
We are for him.
Thank you. Announcements? Are there announcements from members of staff or from board members? Mr. Quinn, and then Mr. La Place.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to report that the Ad hoc Committee had a very helpful meeting with the professionals, the planning professionals. And we are next scheduled to meet with Mr. Purcell and Mr. Bridger. And I'm predicting that our public hearing will be sometime later in March, probably after our second meeting, the board's second meeting in March. So we are making progress and we hope to schedule a meeting with Mr. Purcell and Mr. Bridger from Monday.
Great, thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make it known to the entire board that on Monday evening, the Council did approve the contract with Clark, Hinton, Hints to begin our work on the master plan. So I'd like to personally thank our council representatives, Mr. Cohen and Ms. Sacks, who have been unbelievable in terms of leadership and vision and support for this. So just wanted to share that good news. And we will be meeting with the consultant very, very shortly to get the ball rolling.
Great. Thank you. If you had not said that, I was going to say it myself. So I'm really glad you did. Tim and I met earlier this week about committee appointments and have made those. And I've transmitted that list to the Planning Office. I'm not sure whether it went out this afternoon or whether it will go out in the morning. I did not see it in my inbox. Carrie, did you receive that list?
I was, I was working from home today, so I didn't have that document with me to work on it.
Okay.
Another set of minutes. And I'm not in tomorrow, so I will do it first thing on Monday.
Okay, or I could send it out, or Michael can. I'd like for the board to get that list, because it's been sort of a long time coming. So we will, consistent with what Michael was saying about the master plan consultant and moving forward with that work, we will convene the Master Plan Committee as soon as possible. But we'll distribute that list first and then start setting up meetings. I also wanted to point out that Jim Purcell is, at the end of this month, the 30th, Wednesday, the 30th, presenting his expert insights on stormwater at a sustainable Princeton evening forum. And so, you know, if you have a mind to, mark your calendars, I think, I think it will. It's always good for us to understand better the wide variety of issues related to stormwater. And I suspect that since we did not get to that topic at our retreat, a lot of what Jim might have covered there, he will cover on the 30th. That's just a guess. I haven't talked to him about that at all. And then just a reminder for folks, I think everybody knows Princeton Future has an event on Saturday morning in anticipation of master plan update work. And we've been cautioned about not going to Princeton Future sessions when specific projects are going to be discussed that might come before us. But it's my understanding that, given the nature of this, where specific projects, I gather, are not going to be discussed. It's more of a sharing of ideas and hopes and dreams and wishes. I forget the list of words on the flyer. But Jerry, please correct me if I'm wrong, but are you comfortable with Planning Board members going to that event if they have a mind to?
Yes.
Okay. So that's at the library. I think there's registration required. And that's all that I have in the way of announcements. So I'm not seeing anybody else with their hand raised. And we'll just move right along to the minutes. We have four sets of minutes. The first from April 8, 2021. That was a special meeting. Does anybody have edits or corrections? And if not, would somebody move those?
I'll move them.
By Ms. Owen, seconded by, was that Mr. Chow? Yes. Thought I recognized your voice, but I didn't see your face in time. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining?
Abstaining due to not having been there.
Yes, I will assume. Yeah, that'll be assumed for all of the ones from 2021 now.
Correct.
Great, thanks. Next is the minutes of the regular meeting from April 15, 2021. If there are no corrections or edits, would someone move them?
I'll move them.
Thanks. Seconded by?
Mr. Quinn.
Mr. Quinn, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, and Mr. Bodikheimer abstains. Next, April 22, 2021, also, excuse me, a special meeting that night. Would someone like to move them?
I'll move them.
Moved by Mr. Chow, seconded by Mr. McGowan. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining? Well, Mr. Bodikheimer abstaining. And finally, January 6, 2022.
Louise, I'm sorry, the April 22, that was not distributed, and that was the one that we were going to postpone.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I knew we had talked about one of those, but then it had fallen off my radar. So, okay, April 22. Those minutes need to be reviewed by Frank Regan, is that correct?
That is correct, and he will get it back to me soon.
Okay. So never mind that vote we just took. January 6, 2022. This was a regular meeting, a reorganization meeting from earlier this year. If there are no corrections or edits, would somebody move them, please?
I'll move it.
Moved by Ms. Capazoli, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And I will abstain, as I was not present. Okay. Next up, we have a hearing for Princeton International Properties. This is a minor site plan for mixed use at 4042 North Tulane Street, block 27.02, lot 47. File number P2121-056 PM.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Notice is proper and carry proof of publication or an order?
Good.
That is correct. Everything's in order.
The board has jurisdiction. Just the first order of business, I think, should be, this was filed as a minor. But ultimately, and it's been recommended as a minor by Derek and Jim in their memo. But ultimately, it's the board's decision as to whether to treat it as a minor or major. Now, that could have some consequences in other contexts. But here, they've already noticed, this is a public hearing. They've submitted whatever they need to submit. So as a functional matter, I don't really think it makes a great deal of difference, whether it's treated as a minor or a major. Michael, do you have any feelings on that?
Not really. I think, you know, general site plan review is in order, and that'll be covered by the, what was filed and what was noticed.
Yeah. So what's the pleasure of the board on that? Is it treated as a minor or treated as a major?
Well, in effect, what difference does that make in the way we proceed tonight?
I don't think, I don't think it makes any difference here. It could make a difference depending how the ordinance is set up, as to whether there would even be notice in a public hearing if it was classified as minor. But as I say, then, that's not the case here in Princeton. Because a decision has to be made by the Planning Board. There is no site plan committee, and SPRAB used to exercise a function, although really never had the authority to do so. So here, it'd be a full-blown hearing, and I don't think it makes a difference.
Mr. Cohen, and then Mr. Bodikheimer.
Yeah, my only input that I wanted to give is that I think that this is a really interesting interpretation of the overlay, which requires that the building fronting on the street be preserved in order to take advantage of the density bonuses in the overlay. Because the existing building is sort of being assumed within the new building, in a way. I think that it would be, it's an interesting thing for the board to discuss for giving guidance to future applicants in the overlay zone about what it means to preserve the existing building. You know, and to me, that kind of question places it in the category of a major subdivision, because it's, you know, it's a question of whether it really complies with the intent of the ordinance in that regard.
Yeah, and I'm sure the board members noted that in Elizabeth Kim's memo, she opined that it violated the ordinance, because just for the reasons David gave. Just the facade was retained, the building wasn't retained.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Mr. Bodikheimer?
Well, my question had been, if there was, there were any kind of standards or questions that we should be asking that determine, that something, that there are tests that need to be, you know, we had, I need to make a finding on as a board for it to be considered a major versus a minor. I understand that there aren't any practical ramifications for this one, but I just sort of, and there was already, at this point, a discussion about that, but I don't know if there's anything more general.
The way the code is set up, there are standards, and it's whether all the site plan standards in Section 10B 226 have been complied with. That's really not what the intent of the municipal land use law was. There are several criteria set forth in municipal land use law about extension of roads, sewer, et cetera. And the scope of, whether the scope of the proposed project was within the definition of minor site plan is set forth in the ordinance. Well, the ordinance really doesn't address the scope of the project. It really just repeats the definition of municipal land use law. So we really don't have any guidance. In fact, that is something that's going to be addressed during the course of the SPRAB replacement proceedings, or maybe independently. I know staff has had discussions of whether we even want to classify as minor or major. Of course, if you do classify as minor and you set it up so that you don't need a public hearing or notice, you know, you have issues in terms of public engagement. So that's something we're going to be addressing, and I hope sooner rather than later, so we can clarify that. So we don't have a lot of guidance now. I thought David's point was a very good one, in terms of whether it should be treated as a major, given that this is a major issue as to whether it complies with the ordinance under which the applicant proposes to develop.
Thanks for that, Jerry.
Yeah.
And it was a good question, Nat. Thanks for raising it. And I agree with David, so let's proceed under the assumption that we're treating this as a major site plan.
Now, the board can vote on that right now if it wishes to.
I moved that it be classified as a major.
Mr. Cohen. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Or abstaining? Okay, thank you. So let's see, I have read the, everything that needs to be read. Mr. La Place, do you want to start us off here? And between you and and our other professionals, raise any red flags that you see as was discussed at the retreat last week? Not about this application.
In terms of process.
Hypothetically, and in general.
Thank you, Chair.
Previous experiences.
Michael, if you can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm.
Good evening, everyone. The subject property is located on North Tulane Street, between Wiggins and Spring Streets. It's on a block, on actually the easterly side of a block, that also contains the Public Service Lifting Gas Substation, the Princeton Public Library in Heinz Plaza, the Spring Street Municipal Parking Garage, and several businesses and residential properties. Existing on the site right now is a two-and-a-half-story mixed-use residential and office principal structure, and a one-story accessory garage to the rear. The applicant is seeking site plan approval to construct a new four-story, 14-unit apartment complex with 2,500 square feet of commercial space. The, because they are taking advantage, and I'll talk about the zoning in the section of the overlay zoning that's in place here, largely the front facade of the building, the elevation facing North Tulane, will be incorporated into the new development. And the plan is also for the accessory garage building to be demolished, because the footprint of the entire new complex is quite large, and will be taking up some of the space where the accessory garage is currently located. The property is located in both the RB Residential Business Zone, and it has the AH01 Affordable Housing Overlay. And this is, the overlay zoning is what the applicant is taking, is implementing here by getting greater density in return for preserving the visible part of the building from the street. And so that's a preservation initiative that was plugged into the new overlay zoning ordinance that we did about a year or so ago. There is some concern about how much of the original fabric is being preserved, as Councilman Cohen had mentioned. So we'll be hearing about that. That was raised by the Historic Preservation Officer and the Commission. And there will be affordable housing units generated. There's a 20% requirement in Princeton for affordable housing. Usually, as a project like this was considered inclusionary, affordable housing generation. The area, the location is not within an existing designated local district, but it is mentioned in the master plan as a recommended or suggested district. So that is why it's had Historic Preservation Commission review and input. So I think I'll leave my comments to that for now, and see if my colleagues, Jim or Derek have anything to add at this point.
Jim, Derek, I'm not seeing any, there we go.
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Neither do I. Thank you.
Right.
Sorry.
Jim and Derek, I tell you what, since you've just testified, although I can't say it grand length, if you could both raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. So I guess I'm turning to Mr. Tar, although all the paperwork says Ryan Kennedy, so I guess I should just confirm that you represent the applicant and that you've gotten all the background materials that have Mr. Kennedy's name on them.
Mr. Kennedy and I worked together. He had to be in the lovely town of Cranbury tonight, so I'm here.
All right. Good. Well, thank you for being here, and go right ahead.
Thank you. We've got two witnesses tonight. Marina Rubina is our architect, Jim Kamalak is the engineer. The exhibit, which we have, is a slide deck, a PowerPoint slide deck of 20 slides. And with your permission, we could mark that as applicant one or A1.
Let's mark it as A1, Chris. We'll mark that.
Thank you. Thank you. And we'll refer to it as we proceed. Could we have Marina and Jim sworn together just to save time?
Sure, if you could both raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yeah.
So just one of them, so just one of them, could you each say your full name and spell it? Marina, why don't we start with you?
Full name, Marina Rubina. R-U-B-I-N-A.
Thank you.
James Kamalak, C-H-M-I-E-L-A-K.
Thank you.
Could we share the screen so we can put the slides up for Marina to talk to?
Yes. I think as a participant, you're you're unable to share your screen.
There she goes. Now, Marina, before you begin, you and I discussed the fact that you've testified at various boards, but you're not entirely sure whether you testified at the Princeton Planning Board. So I just wanted to take a minute to go over your qualifications. Where did you get your architectural education?
I have a dual master's degree from the University of California, Berkeley, with masters in architecture and structural engineering.
And you're a licensed architect in New Jersey?
I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Yes.
And you prepared or supervised the preparation of the drawings we're going to look at?
Correct.
Madam Chair, if Ms. Marina Rubina could be accepted as an expert in the field of architecture, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. We accept your qualifications.
And as you go through the exhibit, could you identify what page or what slide number you're on as you go through?
The slide numbers are in the lower right-hand corner. I'll interrupt sometimes to help make sure we see those. And I'm also going to indicate that we've read in great detail the primary memo, which is called the November 10 Engineering and Zoning Memo, is the most complete memo. And it has 11 of the site plan standards, lettered A through K. I've asked the witnesses at the appropriate spot to make specific reference to those items, so that we go through the site plan standards that are referred to in that memo. And with that, I'll turn it over to Marina to start off.
I'd like to interrupt just for a second to confirm that after that November 10 memo, a revised plan was submitted, is my understanding. And then a subsequent memo was generated. So my assumption was that those issues had been addressed, and I'm not telling you not to talk about them. I'm just wanting to clarify that.
Let's talk about them, since we've just talked about them. This slide says that it's a AH01 site plan without variances. In the November 10 memo, the staff concluded that it appeared that the building was set back 11 feet or so, and that the ordinance required that it could only be set back 10 feet. It also, the staff also determined that there wasn't sufficient bicycle parking provided on the site. In both cases, those deficiencies were corrected. And the memo that came out January 6, apologize. The, it says January 21, I think it's 22. The subsequent memo makes clear that the variances have been corrected, and that it proceeds without variances. But in that subsequent memo, it didn't go back through the site plan standards. So that's why I referred to the November 10, 2021 memo, which we're focused on the site plan standards, and that's what's in that memo.
Okay. All right, thanks for clarification.
You bet. Marina?
Great. So thank you so much for hearing our application this evening. And I will try to remember to say the slide numbers and refer to the appropriate site plan issues. But if I forget, either Chris or Jim or other people, please jump in and let me know. So this is our slide that starts us off, as Chris explained, that we have worked on eliminating any possible variances associated with this application. And this is the existing view where, if you're standing on South Tulane Street looking north, this is the existing building. Just to get you oriented, this is the Crop Cycle Building, and this is our proposed building. The slide number two, which is missing a number, unfortunately, I'm not sure what happened to this slide number two, gives you an overview of the site that is outlined here in blue. The site is located, this is again the Crop Cycle Bicycle Shop. This is their parking lot. This is our site of a slightly strange shape. This is the municipal parking garage. And right here is the site of recently approved project at 21 weekends. And then also this, just to give you for context, is the under-construction Nelson Glass Residential Mixed Use Building. So hopefully, everybody's oriented. One thing that I wanted to point out on the slide is that in the report, staff mentioned that our building will be creating a buffer, screening the municipal garage from North Tulane Street, and we think that that's a really great way to describe it.
Those of you who are following the lettered site plan standards, that's relation to the environment standard C for Charlie.
So then here on the slide number three, we're showing where we're located in the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. This again is the site. It has sort of a strange shape over here, again, to get you oriented. This is the Crop Cycle Building. So this slide over here gives us a photograph of the existing building. And there was some confusion during, that I think we clarified during our Historic Preservation Visit, is that there was some misunderstanding that there were two buildings, one number 40 and one number 42, and one of them was being demolished, which seems to be a confusion. and one of them was being demolished, which seems to be a confusion. It is one building. It's just the units on the left have number 40 and the units on the right-hand side have number 42. So it is one building. There's no separate building being demolished. So
You're on slide four now, correct?
Oh, yes. Yes. Sorry. Right. So there is an existing porch located on the, towards Nassau Street side, which is entrance to existing residential unit and existing office. And then these are the residential units above. And then there peeking is the accessory garage that Michael mentioned that is going to be demolished. And then you can see the municipal garage. One question that came up at the Historic Preservation Hearing, the what is the original siding that is on the building that is buried under the existing aluminum siding? And they asked us to investigate. So this is what we did. We opened up. And as you could see in this surgical pop-up, this is the existing stucco and the proposed material for the building will, the existing building will remain as stucco. We will remove the aluminum siding that's covering existing. And then the new addition to the building will also have stucco to match the existing material. So as per Historic Preservation Request, we did the investigation. So here you could see where, this is a photograph of the existing building. There was also a little bit of a confusion of what's going on with the existing porch. So at the moment, the existing porch has an enclosed glazed-in portion and an open portion. So the existing porch is to remain, but we do want to open it all back up so it's all completely open. There will be no enclosed space on the existing porch.
And you're on slide five now, right?
Yes. I will try to start with that. Slide five. Exactly. So you could see this is the existing building. And use, as you will see in the floor plans, we have color coded where is the existing portion of the building that is staying. So we disagree. It's not only the facade of the building is staying. So the existing ground floor offices are remaining pretty much intact. And the left-hand side unit is pretty much remaining intact. There's not much change proposed to it at all. And the right-hand side unit is changing because it's being affected by stairs and elevators. But otherwise, most of it is remaining. So these, I'm on slide six. Finally, I remembered. So on slide six here, this is a view of the proposed building as it would be visible from the municipal parking garage site. And then this is a view down looking good oriented. This is looking south on North Tulane Street. Okay, so here we are on slide seven where I would like to show you the existing site plan, just to get you oriented. So the current layout is as you come up the steps, there's the porches. I talked about this portion is enclosed. There are doors going into the existing office and there are two stairs going upstairs to the existing residential units. And then there's another porch that gets you to the right-hand side office. There are various Bilco doors and steps in the back. So this yellow beige, hopefully you guys could see outline indicates the portion of the building that is to remain. And then these portions, the yellow, this is going to be an elevator and a stair that are going to be introduced. As you could see, the driveway here right now, you enter into the parking lot. So all of this white space is designated to existing parking. Am I forgetting anything, Jim? Think that, yeah, if I forgot something, we'll come back to. So here on the slide number eight, as you could see, so the existing driveway is basically staying, as Jim will talk about further. This red outline is the outline of the existing building. So again, you could see that beige portion is the portion of the existing building remaining. So the existing office is going to get remodeled. It's getting a green roof over it, which I'll talk about in a minute. Their entrances, the existing stairs to the upstairs units are remaining. And we're providing new wheelchair accessible entrance to the offices. So right now, there's no wheelchair accessible way to get to the office space, but there will be because the elevator will be serving both the new residential units and it will serve the office space at the same time. So the new portion of the building, let me walk you through. So you would enter through this lobby and in front of the lobby, there would be short-term outdoor bicycle parking, at least four bicycles. And then there are nine parking spaces for vehicles that are under, under the proposed building. So they're all covered. And eight of those will be provided with future EV charging stations. So there are going to be conduits provided during construction. And the only reason we're saying that the future are not going to be installed right away is we're trying to work with the exact state incentive programs. We're working with Sustainable Future on the exact program of how that will be done. So our intent is to provide as many EV charging stations as possible, but we are for sure going to put all the infrastructure that will be available for that. And then as you would walk in, you could see here, there's a trash recycling room that Jim will talk about, I'm sure. And then in the back, there's a indoor bike room that will have minimum 11 bicycles. So I think we had the wrong number of bicycles shown on our electrical, oh, I'm sorry, on our bike room. Unfortunately, that, that will, now we got it all sorted out. Now we have the correct number of bicycles shown.
So Marina, just to confirm, nine parking spaces are required and nine parking spaces are provided?
Exactly. Yep. Yep.
And there were something like that number in the, in the building as it exists today?
So yes, as it exists today, there are three parking spaces inside the existing garage. And then it's a little bit hard to say depending on how people park. There are at least four, but sometimes I walk by, sometimes people manage to park five cars. So it is depending on how you count. It could be either seven or eight existing parking spaces right now. Jim, what, what do I need to say? Or what would you like to say about this one?
Maybe just highlight the, the rear outdoor space?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
For the garage.
Right, right, right. Sorry. Right. So at the moment, and am I allowed to say still your thunder, but the, we're decreasing the impervious coverage?
We can say that several times. We say it over and over.
So we're very excited to be reducing the amount of paving that is on the site and providing more green space. So in the back, where currently there's no green space at all, we're providing outdoor green space that Jim will later talk about on the landscape plan. So, and then there's further space between us and the parking garage. Am I missing anything else? This is slide eight. I've got the bikes. I've got the, yeah. Okay. All right. Well, hopefully I didn't miss anything. I will keep moving along. So now I'm on slide nine and this is showing the second floor plan. And particularly, I know I'm just a little bit over excited about my green roof. But so as you could see, the existing office, which is remaining, will get a green roof on top of it, which on one hand is providing improved insulation for the office space that's located below. But I'm also really excited because it's not on, on top of a, you know, a really tall building where nobody could see it. So as people walk down the street, they will be able to see it. But it's also the residents upstairs who are in the apartments above will be able to look down on something that's much more exciting and looking down on a green roof rather than, you know, kind of boring.
So not, not, not to say it too many times, but item E on the site plan checklist has to do with stormwater. And staff asked that some control measures be incorporated into the plan, even though they weren't required. So we'll say yet again that there's a slight decrease in impervious areas on the site and we have a green roof.
Right. And Jim will talk about it, but the green roof, we are not getting any, it's not counting towards anything. It's a complete bonus in addition to what's required. I don't know what to call it.
A bonus.
A bonus. Right. So as you could see, again, in the, in the light beige color, these are the existing units that are remaining. There's a dormer being added over here. Otherwise, this unit is literally staying the same, the stair and everything. This unit on the right-hand side is affected by the stair and elevator. The Historic Preservation Board asked us to look at changing the stair from the way that we presented it last time. And we were able to maintain the existing stair. Oh, and there are four, four residential units on this floor. On the third floor, again, you can see the existing residential units are two-story. So this is the, the second story of the existing residential units. And then four more new additional residential units. And this is slide number 10. And on slide number 11, you could see that this is the, the left-hand side, the building's done. It's existing building. It doesn't go any, any higher. This is it. It's done. And then the new building, this is the last floor. It has four residential units. And then combined together, we have the basement plan and the roof plan just to, on sheet, on slide 12, to show you where we are with that. So the existing building has a basement and a crawl space. So here's the existing crawl space is the existing basement. Here's the existing basement on the right-hand side. The only change is where the elevator pit is going into the existing basement. There, it's not usable space for residential uses. It is mostly used for mechanical equipment, meters, all sorts of stuff like that. And then there, these are the footings for the parking above. And then this is the roof plan where you could see there's the existing shape of the roof of the left-hand side portion of the building. There's the green below. There's our new proposed roof with mechanical equipment, roof access elevator. And then we're going to use as much as possible of the roof that's left over for solar panels. Again, we have to work exactly where the solar panels go and exactly what programs they will be done as part of. But the, the plan of action is to have as many solar panels as we could possibly have. I might, I might miss anything. Did I forget saying anything? No?
Great.
So good. Okay. So to walk you through, this is the east elevation facing North Tulane. Here you could see is the porch with the green roof. Here's the existing building. This is the existing building, the gable that's facing up towards Nassau Street. And then the new building here. So this is, remember, we had that view looking down. So the crop cycle building would be right here, blocking a big portion. So again, this is the office existing space with the green roof above.
You were doing, you were doing so well.
14, 14. I'm sorry. Okay. Lost track of my thoughts here. Okay. So on the west elevation facing the parking garage, again, from here, this is the existing building, as you could see, the existing gable, the existing office with the green roof on top. And then this is north elevation facing basically towards the cemetery. And this is slide 16. Hopefully I'm covering things. And then on slide 17, I'm going to pass it on to Jim. Right, Jim?
Yes.
And I, we had a missing slide number and I fixed it.
So for the board's sake, Mr. Kamalak has testified before this board a number of times. He's licensed as a professional engineer and professional planner in New Jersey. If he could be accepted in those capacities.
Yes, and we've accepted him before and we accept him again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so in terms of the overall site layout, Ms. Rubina covered a lot of the highlights here. This is slide 17 on the right-hand side of the plan. We have the existing North Tulane Street. And if we can highlight the entry driveway off of North Tulane, that'll remain basically in the same location that it exists today. So there'll be no change to that. From a parking standpoint, where currently we have an open air parking lot with surface parking at grade, which is largely visible from North Tulane Street, one of the amenities of this project is that we'll have covered parking. So we'll have parking that's interior to the footprint of the building, which will minimize overall views from the streetscape of the parking. There'll also be a wooden screen in the northeast corner along North Tulane so that vehicles, the visibility of any vehicles within the interior is limited. That'll also be buffered by landscaping as proposed on our landscaping plan. In terms of the way the lower level parking area functions, it'll be open from front to back. And tenants of the building can park within any of the nine parking stalls, which is the ordinance compliant number of parking stalls required for this building, based on the number of units and the square footage. And pedestrians can continue interior to the building. Or they can go to the rear of the lot to the left, to the open green space that's been provided, which is largely about 15 feet wide currently. The existing garage butts up against the rear property line. That'll be opened up and provide some additional green space for building tenants. That'll have some picnic tables and, and an area for tenants to, to congregate outside. And as part of that, we have a sidewalk that's adjacent to the rear of the building. That'll also access the rear bike storage area for the tenants, which we discussed previously. The parking area will also include the necessary ADA parking stall and signage that's indicated on the site plan. And then in terms of the trash and recycling, those facilities will be located, as Ms. Rubina highlighted previously, all interior to the building in its own segregated room. And then the owner, who PIP owns many other, other buildings throughout town and operates and maintains those buildings for their tenants, they will secure a private waste hauler in order to remove trash and recycling from the interior storage area out to North Tulane, where the trash vehicle would temporarily pause in North Tulane Street. And then the, the garbage cans would be offloaded into the truck, which is the similar operation for the other properties within North Tulane. And then the, the cans would be immediately moved back in combination of the private waste hauler along with site maintenance personnel, which PIP has on many of their properties. That'll be coordinated and that'll be moved immediately back into the building. So the, the applicant anticipates a very smooth, neat, clean operation. It's really number one on their priority list in terms of, of maintenance and the amenities provided for their tenants in order to maintain a well-kept trash and recycling area. And that's the way that they intend on operating this particular facility, mainly interior to the building.
Let me stop you there, Jim. Item K on the list of site plan items is waste removal. And staff asked that we describe that in sufficient detail, which I think you've just done. And unless there are any questions that come up now or later. You, you also referred to item H, which is pedestrian and bicycle access and touched on that. Item F is the driveway connection, which staff characterized as appropriate. It's the same driveway that exists today. Item F is the driveway connection, which staff characterized as appropriate. It's the same driveway that exists today. You're, um, I'd like you to touch on the traffic impact. Staff concluded that while there was no, uh, traffic report. Produced, that, that does not appear to be a significant impact. And I believe that, uh, in our application materials, we believe that there would be a maximum of six, uh, peak hour movements.
Yeah, I, I can comment briefly on that, just in terms of characterizing the. The general intensity. Uh, in this particular case, we have nine proposed parking stalls and we have about seven or eight existing. Parking spaces on the lot. So the net increase, uh, in vehicle parking spaces is, is minimal. At best, in terms of what we're proposing here. And then additionally, um, we would estimate that within the peak hour. That we would have, um, approximately in, in the PM, about six vehicles within that hour coming into the site. Um, in the afternoon, evening, and then, um, vice versa. In the morning, you would have six vehicles, uh, leaving the site. So you'd have probably a total of, um, six vehicles coming in and three leaving, or three leaving. Uh, or vice versa, in the opposite, um, condition. So within a one-hour period, you know, one, one vehicle. Coming in, uh, to the site every 10 minutes, um, in that particular direction. That's what we estimate. And it's, it's relatively insignificant even from what is compared today.
Thank you.
Okay, in terms of. I was gonna say, in terms of the, uh, site utilities, um, in general, the site utilities will be. Obtained from North Tulane, the way that they are today, and then just increased slightly in size as necessary, as we indicate on the plans. And then with respect to one of the comments in the engineering review memo, there is. Um, an electric utility pole in front of our building, uh, North Tulane, which has an overhead wire to provide power service. To the adjacent building, uh, 50 North Tulane.
If you, the arrows are going up and down that line.
Yeah.
If you can see.
Yeah, can you guys see it right here?
So it goes in that diagonal, uh, direction and does encroach within where the proposed building footprint would be located. So. We are in discussions with PSCNG relative to, um, relocation of that pole northerly. Uh, closer to 50 North Tulane, um, and then we'll pursue a pole relocation. Uh, with PSCNG, which they'll delineate based upon, you know, their standards and what's required in order to maintain and provide. Continuing service to 50 North Tulane. So the overall intent is that this applicant would, uh, pursue that coordination. And ensure that the neighbor, um, would maintain their power service accordingly in order to facilitate. Uh, the proposed building. And whatever facilities, you know, would be necessary with a pole or transformer, et cetera. That, that's, uh, would be delineated by PSCNG. So that would be addressed as part of this application. I think that covers it on this slide.
The next slide.
Slide 18. Slide 18 highlights, um, two components within our plan. One is landscape, the second is lighting. Uh, and in green, you can see that we've provided within the green spaces additional, um, foundation plantings. Uh, within the side yards. Consisting of, of, of native plantings, uh, as well as in the rear within the green space. And then in the front, we have, um, some additional, uh, boxwood plantings, some switchgrass, native switchgrass. And then we're also proposing, uh, four trees along the property frontage. Um, this application would require the, the removal of, um, eight trees on the site. Uh, four would be replaced on the site, um, as part of that. Nine tree replacements have been calculated to be. Uh, required in order to comply with the ordinance. And then, uh, the difference, there are that differential. Uh, since the site is somewhat limited in terms of its, its overall area. Uh, a contribution would be made to the shade tree commission in accordance with the, with the ordinance requirements.
That was item B on the, uh, site plan list.
And then in terms of, um, lighting for the site, the lighting is, is very minimal. It's, it's really just suited for what's. Immediately necessary to, uh, enter and exit the building, number one. And then also to provide some minimal lighting within the rear green space. So the two components would be. Um, in this particular slide 18, in the upper left-hand corner, recessed canopy, 60 watt. Canopy lights over the door entries. That Ms. Rubina is highlighting, uh, over the main door entries there. And then in terms of, uh, landscape lighting and pedestrian lighting. We're proposing, um, louvered bollards and we've provided a pictorial representation of what. Of what we're anticipating for those 100 watt, um, louvered, uh, bollards. So overall, you know, we're, the intent here is to, to green up the property over what's there, especially around the perimeter and the green space. And then also to provide the necessary lighting, but keep it to the minimum of what's required, which is we feel in context with the local neighborhood. And the next slide. Uh, so slide lot 19 highlights from a zoning standpoint that, you know, this particular project. It's in the, uh, AH01 zone, the property specifically designated for inclusionary, affordable housing. From the residential perspective and permits first floor, um, commercial use. In this case, office of 2,500 square feet. And we're showing here that the project does meet the zoning requirements. For a minimum front yard, maximum front yard, uh, setback, minimum side yard, minimum rear yard. As well as the building height. And the impervious coverage, we do have a decrease, which we had, we had mentioned. There's no specific, uh, minimal landscape buffer in the AH01 zone, but with the 15-foot. Open green space at the rear, it generally, you know, fits the intent of the other. Um, AHO overlay ordinances in terms of their character and context. So that element, uh, additionally is being provided. Um, in terms of, maybe we can scroll up. Marina to one of, of slide 17. One more. And I should just touch on, um, in terms of drainage and, and stormwater management. Um, the site will be elevated from a, a, a couple of perspectives. One is that all roof leader drains. And surface drainage will be conveyed directly to the municipal stormwater system. Um, so that'll be removed from the site, minimizing potential for any stormwater runoff on adjacent properties. That'll all be tied in pursuant to our plan. And additionally, as a bonus element, um, over that, the first floor. Office area, we are including a green roof that was highlighted on the previous slide at approximately 850 square feet. So, um, not necessarily required from an ordinance standpoint, but that's an additional site element that we see as a benefit. And, uh, we'll certainly add to the, um, the character of the project and improve, um. Some stormwater management, uh, capabilities of the site. Slide 19. And 20. And, and here we, we just touched on, uh, the fact that the major and minor had been, you know, addressed by staff. There was a feeling that, you know, this particular project would be a minor site plan. Evidently the board. Uh, is considering this a major, but you know, it, it is part of the record in that analysis. And from an affordable housing standpoint, in terms of the, the overall units provided in their distribution on slide 19. Perhaps Marina, you can speak to that, um, here on this slide.
I hope it's okay. There is a cleaning crew in my office here. Hopefully it's not too loud. Can you guys still hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you fine. We, we don't hear what's in your background.
Oh, okay, great. Excellent. I hear.
Yeah.
So yes, we are providing three affordable units out of 14, um, total, which is 21%. While, um, 20 is required, uh, we're required to provide one very low income unit, one low income unit. And one moderate income unit to meet the, um, statutory requirement. And, um, Chris's and Ryan's, um, office is working closely with Marine full away on determining exactly. Which units are gonna be which incomes. Am I describing that correctly, Chris?
Correct.
So, does that mean you, I'm sorry, Jerry.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering if you've identified which three. Will be designated affordable? Are you still deciding that? Or are you deciding of the three you've identified which will be which?
No, the, the, uh, obviously we're, we're following the New Jersey Administrative Code. Which is the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls. Princeton and other towns follow the state regulations on that point. Um, I think the issue is, is whether the first, the, the smaller of the smallest of the three units. Is, uh, a, uh, when, uh, studio or a one-bedroom. This is a one-bedroom, or, or studio, a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom. Where the.
Chris, Chris, there can't be any one-bedrooms, um, because no more than 20% of the affordable units, um, can be, um, one-bedroom. And this would be 33%. So there would have to be one three-bedroom or two three-bedrooms. Uh, and, uh, two-two bedrooms if there was one three-bedroom.
Again, the, the, this, the, the issue that we're having is that the size of the units is a guideline. And Maureen is working with us to, to determine the, the, the size, whether the walls could be moved. Uh, uh, given the, the number of units that Jerry's referring to. By the way, that's slightly different than what Maureen has indicated. So again, we'd like to work with both of you to make sure we get it right.
Yeah, yeah, they, let's definitely do that.
And I think the board will have an interest in the location of those units. In, in other words, what, what they're, where are they facing the street? Or, or are they facing the garage? You know, uh, if you can testify about that, if you know. I think folks will have an interest in that. There was a, a nearby. Project where folks were concerned that all of the affordable units were facing the substation. So I'm anticipating that the same kinds of questions will come up tonight, where, whether they're scattered around or whether they're all. In what would be considered a less desirable location in the building.
These discussions with Maureen have been occurring this week and now Jerry's got his point of view that's a little different. So, uh, essentially we cannot indicate which units, by all means, they'd be spread around, but we can't identify the units per se.
Maybe it's a condition, uh, assuming.
Of course, that, yeah, we would comply with the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls and have, uh, uh. The, what, uh, Maureen refers to as guidelines for unit sizing. Uh, because we're not borrowing money, uh, from the FHA for this, uh, MAFA. So with that.
And maybe we could, maybe we could have the location subject to the review by, um, you know, the plant, the planning staff.
By all means.
Yeah.
Great.
So, uh, I think, uh, by my notes, we've covered 10 out of the 11 of the site plan standards. The, one that we didn't yet talk about was, uh, the letter D, and that is historic archaeological landmark sites. The, uh, I, I want to be very clear about this. This is a suggested historic site. It's not an historic site. And indeed, to be clear about that, look at Elizabeth Kim's memo. Uh, from, uh, November 12 of last year, uh, the review was just the standard review, which they give to all projects. Which might have an impact. And the applicant was not required to submit a preservation plan, which is sort of proof positive that the building is not historic per se. We're, we're gonna talk about the comments that were, were made there, but I think it's, uh, uh, I just wanted to be clear that it was in an area that. Is perhaps to be designated as a historic district. Which brings us back to the, uh, uh, issue that, uh, we started off with. I think Mr. Cohen raised the question of whether this complies with the, the, the ordinance. And I wanted to be, uh, uh, clear about that. The. Ordinance, uh, calls for the street-facing house in, in, in certain areas. Including this house, that the street-facing house must remain. Uh, I think, uh. Marina, I'm gonna ask you to go back to your floor plan drawings.
Is this the one thing?
Yes, and, and you testified that the red outline is the, uh, existing, uh, building. Correct.
Yes.
So what the, the, the ordinance, uh, 17A412 is the applicable ordinance for the AHO. And it, it, to just paraphrase or to read you the one sentence. Utilization of the AHO regulations on the following properties, including this property, on the following properties. Requires the retention of the street-fronting buildings. Requires retention of the street-fronting buildings. So we have sought to show you that the, uh, street-fronting building is. For all intents and purposes retained and attached or affixed to the new structure. So that, just again, the red line shows the portions of the existing street-facing structure, which will remain. Uh, unless there are other questions about other aspects of the, of the presentation, that it, uh. Is, uh, what our testimony. I think as always, I'd like to reserve the opportunity to sum up after you. We have questions or comments from planning board members.
Mr. Tar, I just wanted to bring one thing up. Did you receive Elizabeth Kim's, uh? There was a report that was generated today from the Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes, and, and, uh, and.
That today?
Uh, was yesterday, the second.
Yeah.
Thank you. I just want to make sure you received it.
Yeah, uh, I mean, uh. Uh, I, I don't want to read it nor I want to necessarily characterize it, but I think the, the essence of the point number one is that they made the same. Uh, raised the same concern regarding the 21 Wigan Street applications. That, uh, the, the preservation of, uh, of, of the existing street-facing building. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's honored here as it was there. But in order to, uh, build the new structure. Uh, we, we, like they, have attached the new structure to the existing structure. And, uh, HPC thought that they, they just, they didn't, didn't like that, even though that's what the ordinance says to do. That's our position that we've, uh, complied with the ordinance, as you see here.
Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I know I'm the one who raised this question. I, I want to say that I think the applicant did a pretty good job. Of preserving the existing street-fronting building. I want to ask a couple of questions or one question and, and maybe make a couple of comments, uh, regarding that. I believe there's a street-fronting side entry porch that was removed. Uh, but. Um, it appears that the red outline. Uh, does not include that. So in.
So, let's, let's look at slide number seven. We see the porch with the arrow there. You're talking about this entrance here, Marina. This.
No, the side one, that, that.
This guy right here.
Okay, and so is that marked in red or is that marked in red on the next slide?
Uh, it is not because in, in my opinion, it's an exterior.
Go to slide eight, please, Marina.
Not, sorry. Yeah, so here, this is the edge of the building. This is the edge of the building and this is the little porch that David is indicating.
Right, so to be perfectly clear.
Right here, I did not include the porch on the existing building.
Okay.
And then there's similarly, there's a little porch roof in the back that covers the, the stair that I. Did not interpret as the building. Do you interpret that as the building?
I, I, I do. I, I'm not concerned about the rear porch because it's not street-fronting. Uh, but I do think, we just want to be really clear.
Got it. Well, why don't we just do it right now?
Street-fronting porch was removed.
Here we go. We're gonna add it right now.
Uh, even though it's street-front. Uh, even though it's street fronting and I, I consider that part of the building and I think you preserved the other street fronting porch, which sort of
Other one has
That you think
It has, um, enclosed space. It's glazed in. And this one is just a roof.
Yeah.
So that, to me, that was different, but
Anyway, in, in my opinion, that, that is a piece of the street fronting building. And the, the other, um, the, the only other detail that troubles me a little bit is that the roof, the street fronting roof of the existing building has been, portions of it have been concealed um, by building on top of the existing roof. And so that's the one other location where I think there's some gray area in terms of whether the existing street running building has been preserved. I'm fleshing this out more because I want to, um, flag it for future applications than because I want to make problems for this application. I think, you know, Marina's been quite sensitive to the existing building in trying to design, design the new building to integrate with the existing building. I think some of the interesting things that she, she's done, sort of changing the finishes on the existing porch or the existing one-story portion where the green roof is, is going and making that a darker finish that then relates to some of the finishes on the new building. You know, I, I like several of the, of the moves, uh, that she's made. And, and I'm willing to, uh, accept the couple of minor areas where I feel like the existing building hasn't been preserved. But I think that going forward, you know, I would encourage the board and staff to think of this overlay as requiring that, just like uh, the Historic Preservation Commission does with buildings that are actually governed by the Historic Preservation ordinance, that anything that's visible from the street is subject to their review. And that that's the way we should be thinking about existing buildings in these overlays. Anything that's existing, that's visible from the street fromage should be considered, uh, in deciding whether the preservation of the existing building has been honored. So that's, that's my comment. Uh, in terms of that issue.
Can I just follow up, could I follow up for a second? Marina, I thought you said when David started talking that, okay, um, talking about the, the right front, uh, porch, okay, I'll edit, something like that. Did you just mean to do a slide or?
I, so David was wondering where does the porch go? Are you guys able to see my little red outlines?
Yeah, right.
So per David's request, I drew little boxes. I can't quite move them to exact size.
To answer Jerry's question, Marina, you're, you're not proposing to alter the architect, you're just
No. David asked about the red outline.
Right.
And to me, the front porch, because it's enclosed space was part of the envelope and these were not. But if David thinks that it's important to add the little red line, that, that's what I just did.
Ms. Sax, you had your hand raised before. Did you, did you pull it down on purpose?
I, I was just going to say, echo what, uh, David said, you know, we were, uh, David and I very involved in drafting this ordinance and spent a lot of time, um, thinking about potential implications. And I, I agree, I, I, we, we didn't have in mind that um, preserving the front building would mean enveloping it with another building. That was definitely, I don't think what we envisioned. And I agree, we have to think about, um, going forward the implications for the ordinance. But that said, I think that Marina has done really quite a spectacular job here. Um, aesthetically and in, in so many ways, um, what we're ending up with is, and I don't want to, you know, go into ultimate conclusions, but I, I wanted to underscore my agreement with, with, with what David said.
Okay, thanks. Um, Ms. Capazoli?
Yeah, I, um, I just wanted to point out that, um, part of the HPC memo was really about how the, um, there was a maximum ten-foot setback. Um, so the, that, I think, forced this situation. And I guess then the, the HPC point was that I think we have to be really careful with these overlays, um, in terms of, you know, we really thought about this overlay on Nassau Street, but not so much on other streets. And, you know, going forward, maybe there's, um, a, a little flexibility. I don't know, but we certainly, I think HPC saw how this was driven um, by the AHO uh, overlay. And, and we understand why it is the way it is, but we were not sure the overlay was so successful.
Julie, I, we, I've got to say, you know, Tulane was added at the very end. And so there, I, that's true. It wasn't, um, the, the, the great deal of thought was given into not, was given to Nassau Street. And then Tulane was sort of adapted in. And I, I think this is a fantastic job. We're ending up with something that's better. But I do think we need to look at that ordinance again and, and be sensitive to streets that are not exactly in the same, they're not necessarily consistent with, with the initial street that the overlay was designed for.
Okay, thanks. That's pretty much my major point.
Okay, thank you. Um, other, uh, questions from board members? Uh, Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Quinn, I'm looking, trying to keep track. Mr. Quinn is, was first and then Mr. O'Donnell. Tim?
I would have been okay with going alphabetically, but, um, as, as is the roll call. I, I'm, I'm hoping that we can come to some sort of language and a condition that ensures that the, um, affordable units are either located on different floors of the building or that they're not going to be next to each other. I, I assume the applicant shares this board's, um, concern about not segregating affordable units from market units. And I would just add that this is, I should have prefaced by saying this is a very exciting project. And I, I'm looking forward to seeing it being constructed. But I wonder what kind of language is appropriate in a condition to ensure that, um, that the affordable units are distributed in a way that they're not next to each other.
But Tim, when we were discussing that, here are some notes I wrote to myself for condition. Um, separate condition on the number of bedrooms, we talked about that, but that the affordable unit should be dispersed and, and in no less favorable locations than the market units and would be subject to review by the planning staff. I think maybe that's a start. There might be things we could add to that. Um, but at least that was my thoughts.
Okay, good. Mr. O'Donnell?
Thank you. Uh, regarding the parking, uh, the nine parking spaces will all be reserved for residents. I, I understand. Um, will there be, uh, this is a mixed use building, so there will be employees, there will be, uh, people coming in off the street. Will there be, uh, signage restricting, you know, indicating that the parking is restricted, uh, to just, to just the residents?
Uh, we, we're aware of various, uh, buildings around town that take various approaches. Uh, uh, but signage is always one way to say that it's reserved for residents or occupants of the building. Um, but some people, you know, say that a tow truck is going to come take your car away if you, if you park improperly. Uh, I think for now, the, there, there's no signage or, uh, uh, other techniques that are, that are planned.
Okay, and no gated entrance?
No, no gated entrance.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest, you know, the, the ordinance requirement is for a number of parking spaces relative to a number of residential residences. But I don't think that it states anywhere that all of those parking spaces must be used by residents. And the reason I bring up the point is that in a close to town location like this, it's possible that the, uh, the landlord may find tenants who don't have cars. They may possibly end up with one or two leftover parking spaces and they want, may, may want to give those to the business that's on the ground floor. And I wouldn't want to restrict that from happening unless Jerry disagrees with my interpretation.
No, I, I, I do agree with it. Um, I, I thought the point that Owen made was a good one. But if there, if we, if the board decides there should be signage, it should, and they want it reserved, it should be reserved for the occupants of the building, not the residents.
Right. The, uh, the ordinance obviously exempts, uh, the, uh, office and some of the apartments from requiring a parking space. So it's, occupants would be an interesting use if we went that route.
So you have no other signage, uh, planned for anywhere?
No, the, the memos, the memos point out that if a small sign was to be, uh, requested, it would go to the zoning officer later. And if it complied, it, it could be added.
Okay. Um, other questions from other board members? I have a few, but I, I don't want to jump the line. They're, okay, not seeing any hands up. Oh, Zenon?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to ask how the, the building is going to be, uh, heated. That's my, as my usual.
Oh, thank you for bringing it up. See, there, it, it's all electric. I should have mentioned that at the beginning and got overwhelmed with excitement over my green roof and I forgot to mention it. I apologize, but yes, we're, we're very much aware of the, um, hope of moving away from fossil fuels and hopefully our, um, building that is not going to be using any gas will be moving us in that right direction. Completely slipped my mind. Thank you for, for asking.
Great, great, thanks.
It's good to hear. Um, so I had, had a few, um, questions. First, I guess I'll ask about the trees. I, 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 I feel I would be remiss in not pointing out, and this other folks may have noticed this just walking by, but, um, the trees that will be removed, especially one of them. One of them is one of the biggest evergreen trees in the downtown. You can see it from blocks away. It's really a big, big stately tree. And, um, so I'm, I, I understand based on the footprint I'm looking at that there is no working around that tree. That has a very wide, uh, it's, it's a, it's a big tree in diameter. Um, but it does concern me that the trees that you're planning to plant, as far as I can tell, are, are not shade trees, not big trees, but are, um, dogwoods. And, uh, some of the, some of the other plantings are native and some are not native. And I just would, first of all, I'd like for one of the conditions, uh, tonight to be that the landscape committee, um, uh, looks at this before all is said and done. Um, and I'm wondering whether in at least one location in front of the building, perhaps, uh, to the left of the driveway in that area where there's a little bit more space, um, a shade tree is planted in uh, instead of one of the smaller, uh, edge of woodland flowering trees. Because when we lose these great big trees downtown, um, you know, you may have less impervious cover and that is really great. I'm just delighted to see that. Um, but we're losing a tree that intercepts a ton of water. Um, and takes up in its fruit system a lot of water. And, um, and, you know, that's happening all over. It's, it's going to be happening along Witherspoon Street as that evolves and, and yes, trees will be planted in their place. But we just have to be thinking about replanting trees that will be, one day, have a chance to be really big. Yeah, I think we owe it to ourselves, not just aesthetically, but in terms of the, having a livable downtown with shade. Um, and I think also in the area behind the building, which you're envisioning to be a, an area for folks to gather. Um, I just think the, the way that's planted is going to be really, you know, really important. It could make or break it as a, as a space, as a little outside room, because it will be, you know, very much tucked in between, uh, two tall buildings or relatively tall, um, for Princeton and, um, so it's another, um, thing to think about with the landscape committee. And maybe, you know, let, we, we should also, of course, ask, uh, Dan Dobremilsky to take a look at it and just advise on ways to make that to plant that in a way that makes it, um, you know, really beautiful back there.
It's, it's your custom to send these to the landscape subcommittee and we're fine with that.
Yeah. Um, I also wanted to, on slide seventeen, you pointed out the utility wire going to the other building. On slide four, uh, is a great illustration of why we so desperately need to put our utility wires underground. Um, and I'm just wondering whether when you talk to PSE and G, you know, maybe you can get them to address, uh, that pole as well, which is leaning and looks sloppy and is just that whole street, like so many streets, just, just outside of downtown is just teeming with wires.
I bet if Mr. Purcell helped Mr. Kamalik, we could get, talk him into it.
Just something to think about. Um, I also wanted to ask about the bike parking. I don't know how electric bikes work, but do they, do they have batteries that you pull off and plug in inside your house? Or do you have to plug in electric bikes the same way you do electric cars? And if so, do you have some chargers for the bikes in your bike storage area?
Uh, we have been discussing providing, um, either, um, my husband has an electric bike and it is just, oh, plugs into the bike. He doesn't remove the battery. So I don't know, maybe there are other ones that you do remove the battery. So in our particular case, we were discussing that we may be providing additional support for the bicycles. There would be a pump, there would be tools for fixing the bicycles and we'll definitely discuss with the building owners providing an outlet for charging.
It's just a wall plug, though. It's not as fancy as a car charger.
It, it's not a car charger. It's like, it goes into a regular outlet.
Regular three
It's a standard circuit, one twenty volt, not, not
As long as there's just somewhere to plug it in. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, great. So maybe put, you know, three or four back there. You know, um, good. I think that's all that I had. Um, and I know there at least one member of the public, um, has their hand raised. Are, are there any other questions or comments from board members before I open the meeting for public questions and comment? Okay, not seeing any. So, um, with that, I'll open the meeting to questions and comments from members of the public. The, so if you would like to ask questions or make a comment, um, and you are an attendee in the meeting, please, um, click on the little hand icon at the bottom of the screen to raise your hand. And, um, we'll take folks in the order in which they raise hands. So I see that someone identified as Fabian or Fabian has their hand raised. Could bring that person over.
I've been attempting it. Justin, are you working on it too?
Uh, yes, I'm promoting them to a panelist right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
For whatever reason, it's not allowing them to move over. The other option, and I know this hasn't been our standard, is just to allow them to talk without, oh, here we go.
Good. Patience pays off.
Appears they've disappeared.
Yes, that is what looks like.
Neither here nor there.
I don't see him any longer.
Justin?
I don't see them any longer either.
They get
I know that when somebody is promoted, when someone is promoted, they get kicked out for a second or two and then brought in. And it's possible for people to be misled and think that they've lost the connection and exit the meeting and not, and then they're not able to be brought in. I know that's happened to me early on. So hopefully they'll log back in and we can.
And that's worth mentioning.
I think it's important to mention.
Okay. Are there any other members?
He was the only member of the public by their hands raised. So I don't know if you want to take a five minute break or to give them a chance or if you want to continue.
Yeah, I do want to do want to make sure that that person has a chance to log back in and pose questions or make comments.
The board could start discussing it and that would give some time. I mean, the public could always come back.
Yeah, this might be a good time for me to raise a question that I did have that I was going to save for our discussion later.
Okay, good. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Based on comments that David made regarding, you know, holding this application up as an example for future applications. Is that something that we can really do? Can we hold future applicants to a standard that we're relaxing in this particular case? I'm just curious about.
From the applicant's point of view, I don't understand what's being relaxed, if I could be honest.
Yeah, what I had suggested, Chris, is that one should consider all aspects of the existing building that are visible from the street as being subject to preservation based on, you know, it's I think I wasn't suggesting, Owen, that we hold this up as an example of a perfect adherence to what the intent of the ordinance is, but to use it as an opportunity to clarify on the record what we as a board think is meant when we, when the ordinance says that preservation of the existing street fronting building is required. And that that would mean that the portions of the building that are visible from the street are required to be preserved. In this case, because that has not been clear and because the applicant did a pretty good job of preserving almost all of the street fronting building, I'm inclined to be lenient, but not to, you know, I'm talking about using this as an opportunity to clarify the standard.
And I think what we
I'm just going to ask you to weigh in, Jerry. I don't know if it works like that, that like that we're, we can, at the planning board, sort of clarify an ordinance. I don't know that we have standing to sort of create some sort of legal framework to to, you know, create an interpretation of an ordinance. I don't know. Can you speak to that, Jerry? It sounds, I just don't know if it's, if it's.
I think we can do that. And I think we could put in the resolution. In fact, we should address the resolution should the board approve the project. The fact that not everything was preserved, most of it was preserved. It might not have been clear what the requirement was, but for future reference, and then we could lay out exactly what David said in terms of how the ordinance should be applied. Because it's really a question of application, which might be another way of saying interpretation. But I think, I think we can do that.
Well, I think, and especially since the clarification was offered by council members. I mean, both, you know, agreed that, and so they can speak in a way that, that perhaps other planning board members would have a harder time doing as to the intent. And so I feel like it's a very good place to just clarify again, going forward what we would like to see and how we view the
Yeah, I'd love to hear. So I'd love to hear what Derek has to say.
Mr. Bridger.
Thanks. I'm personally happy for the guidance. I think David's guidance is clear. It's kind of a a lot of interpretation left to us to look at these projects. So this gives us guidance going forward and I like it. So.
And I think this issue is really likely to back again and again. As you walk through downtown, there are so many sort of hidden surface lot areas and that just are ripe for redevelopment. And and so I think that it really will be helpful to have that guidance. So glad to have it too.
So with apologies to Mr. O'Donnell, because I think this discussion has sort of enlightened in my mind what he was saying. To be precise here, there was an open porch on the right hand side of the building, which was somehow enclosed or partially removed. And Mr. Cohen's guidance is to be followed that anything that could be seen from the street must remain, anything, everything.
Let me, as the board members at this point, again, assuming that this gets approved. Should we add to that the point that Mia made, which I thought was a very good one, which is the the expectation certainly when council, when this was being drafted, was not that the new building would basically envelop the old building. And that, you know, that shouldn't, that's not the way this, the ordinance should be applied in the future. Would everybody agree that that's worthwhile putting in as well? Yeah.
Yes. And I don't think that this new building or, you know, add addition does truly envelop. I mean, it conceals more of what you can see from the road now than maybe ideal going forward, but it doesn't surround it, you know, in a way that really does erase the street frontage that's so familiar to people. I guess obvious, but Mr. La Place?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, that in my recollection of when we were putting this ordinance together, the overlay district. I think our goals were really, and we were primarily thinking about National Street, but we were also thinking about Tulane. That whether it was significant or attractive architecture, we wanted to keep that and have it be part of the way the streetscape evolved. And there was a lot of talk about infill development and making, you know, what's a nice and interesting and and full of character, you know, a way of enhancing the streetscape while bringing more density and bringing more housing in. So it really wasn't, it was, it was sensitive to preservation, but it wasn't really another way of doing like a historic history. It wasn't really intended to go fully that way with like, for instance, wanting to preserve the full footprint of a existing building, that sort of thing. And that was sort of the flavor of the discussion, as I recall.
And in fact, thinking a little bit more about it, the language about infill, you probably don't even need it if we use David's language about basically the features of the building that are visible from the street should remain visible from the street. That really, I think sufficiently addresses it.
Yeah. Mr. McGowan?
I agree with the language as Jerry just stated, just stated there. I really don't want to get into what is envelopment of a building, you know, so, you know, I mean, I just but, but I think we get, you know, to preserve the streetscape or that to me is what, if there's language added, that's what it should be.
Yeah, I agree. It starts getting fairly amorphous when you're talking about enveloping and trying to apply that standard.
Yep. Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands raised by board members. And I am also still not seeing that the person identified as Fabian has returned to the meeting. And so maybe that person intended to bail out. I certainly hope so.
His hand up by accident, Louise? Because it was up from the very beginning.
It's possible because it was up for a long time. Yeah, you're right. It had been up since, since well before. Well, yeah, since 10 minutes after the meeting started or something like that. So I think that's very possible. Okay. Any other comments where we move this one way or the other and ask Mr. Muller to summarize, Mr. McGowan, your hand is up. Is it up again or is it still?
It's up again. It's up again.
Please go ahead.
Since you're just asking for comments, back to the distribution of affordable units. Now, I noticed that they are consulting with Maureen Fullaway, which makes my concern about, about, you know, what's the waste being distributed, a lot, a lot less than I guess other people. So I would ask then, if it comes back, it's not only reviewed by the staff, but it'll also be added that a consideration from the housing manager also be considered or commented on too. That would be, that's what I request as part of the condition.
It's good thought. It's a good thought.
Okay. Mr. O'Donnell?
I don't, I don't know if this is appropriate. I'm just going to throw it out there. I noticed that Ms. Kim is a participant here. If she has anything that she'd like to add. This is the appropriate place.
Sure, that's a, that's a good invitation. Ms. Kim? I'm seeing the Golden Gate Bridge, but I'm not seeing you quite yet.
She's crossing the bridge.
Elizabeth, if you could raise your right hand.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, for recognizing me. I do want to thank David Cohen for making those comments. At the time, when this application came before HPC, which was November, David was still our liaison. So I appreciate bringing this to the board's attention. And I have to agree with him as far as the retention of the the features of a building that are street facing. And I think that it even states it in your ordinance, which says requires retention of the street facing building for this overlay. And in addition to maintaining the character of that building that faces the street, because again, as other members have said, that I believe it was the intention of the ordinance to preserve some of that historic character. Otherwise, it probably wouldn't have been written that way. But with that said, I also want to thank the applicant who actually listened to HBC and was able to uncover the exterior siding and identify that there was stucco underneath there. That was something that HBC, you know, asked them to do to determine what that was. And so they will continue to use that same material. So with that said, I just want to thank the board for letting me talk on this application.
Absolutely. And good call, Mr. O'Donnell.
Louise, do we want to see if Derek and Jim have any comments they want to add?
Yep. Mr. Purcell, Mr. Bridger?
Just my earlier comment, I think David's point was good and provide good guidance going forward.
Jim?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Oh, I just have one last question. This is about the green roof. Do you have, well, this is, this is something we can look at at landscape committee if you want, but I'm curious about whether you have in mind already the type of green roof, whether this is going to be succulents or whether you envision flowering plants with a deeper root system or, or what? Because they weigh different amounts. And I'm sort of curious about whether you're having to reinforce the roof in order to accommodate it or just sort of what, what your thinking is about your green roof.
You touched on upon the exact right point. Yes, we have to make sure because this is the existing portion of the building. We have to balance what the existing building could support. We hope that for sure, all the types of green roofs will be visible from the point of view of people living above and looking down at it. If it could be, for lack of a better word, fuzzier and taller, that you can see it from the street, that would be the hope. But we have to balance it with the structure. And in all likelihood, we think it will be succulent. But I am so terrible at plantsy, but I, maybe Jim. My sense of plants is, you know, Jim will be in charge of that.
The ones with succulents can be very beautiful. I mean, really, really pretty, especially pretty to look down on, whether you're you know, on a walkway or looking out a window from above. Anyway, do you want to speak to that, Mr. Schmillek?
I was just going to say that the succulents tend to reproduce really well and and sort of maintain their, you know, their overall growth and spread in a pretty, you know, intense way from a maintenance standpoint. So we would, we would think we would have a a component of that as part of the green roof, but certainly we'll, we'll finalize that upon an approval and coordination with the landscape subcommittee.
Great. Thank you. Mr. La Place?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to mention that from a planning perspective and from the perspective of our master plan. This is really smart growth in terms of increasing density where it makes sense. It's not in the central business zone, but it couldn't be closer. And it's within walking distance of so many services and shops. And it's really, you know, we mentioned earlier where it's near the library and all these other functions and destinations. So it's nice to see density going in where, where it makes sense from a planning perspective. And of course, the added benefit of providing some affordable housing units. So I just wanted to mention those.
Thank you for that. Okay, any other thoughts from board members?
I think we should officially close the public.
Oh, do carry. Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, this concludes the public portion, public hearing portion of the meeting and we'll begin final comments. Perhaps entertain a motion and discuss conditions for this application. Mr. Cohen?
I'm happy to move approval of the application. I think I don't have any additional conditions beyond what Jerry has already articulated, but guess we should review those.
I would second that motion.
Thank you. Moved by.
Cohen's language.
Thank you. Mr. Muller, you want to summarize conditions, please?
Absolutely. So this is major site plan approval with conditions. And I'm first going to go through the ones I jotted down and board members should jump in if they think we should not be including them. And then I'm going to go over the report of Jim and Derek and also from Emily, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Kim. But I don't have a report from yesterday. I didn't even realize, I don't know if that was distributed. I didn't realize that it even was in existence until this meeting. So I don't know if that changes anything. But there is a list of recommendations on page five or six of that report. I'm going to walk briefly through that in a second. But first, let me go through what my, on my notes.
Muller, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you said a major site plan with conditions. There's also one variance as well, correct?
No, no, there are no variances.
I thought the variance was required for the 11 and a half foot setback instead of 10.
It's 10. Go ahead, go ahead, Chris.
We just added the foot to the balconies. They're at 10 feet.
Oh, okay. All right. Oh, okay. All right.
The existing building is at nine feet. The existing building is at nine. That's fine.
Okay, all parking spaces will have EV charging infrastructure.
Eight of the nine.
Eight of nine. Will have as many solar panels as possible. Timing will, is not determined because of, for the reasons that Marina gave earlier. Garbage cans will be moved from the trash and recycling area to North Street Lane and for garbage truck pickup and will be immediately moved back after the, the cans are offloaded into the waste haulage vehicle. The above ground wire that cuts across the site and provides service to 50 North Street Lane will be addressed and, and resolved. There'll be a contribution to the true replacement fund as per the reports with respect to affordable housing. The number of bedroom, number of bedrooms for the three units will be resolved after review by the housing manager and myself. The location, the unit should be dispersed and not in any less favorable location than the market units. And that'd be subject to review by planning staff and the housing manager. Signage. Parking spaces should be reserved for occupants of the building. That'll be reviewed by the zoning officer who are okay on that. Any other signage to be, to be proposed and reviewed? No.
Not at this time.
Okay. Then the Landscape Subcommittee and Mr. Dobromski will review, improve the landscape plan, including the landscaping for the green roof. And there should be at least one shade tree along the frontage. Bear with me. Then there should be three or four outlets to charge electric bikes in terms of Jim and Derek's report. And now I'm just looking at the November 10 report. Okay. Jim, do we want to say anything? Were you satisfied? You had a staff comment and Derek about store owner management, although not required. Do you want to add anything on that? I don't see the need for that. No, okay.
No, no need.
Okay. Applicant, okay. The applicant must provide a computation based on the administrative code to determine the required sewer connection fee. There will be reduction in the connection fee for the affordable units, which not have a fee. Then let's see. Most all of these have been reviewed during the hearing. Architectural plans now amid staff comments and summary of conditions of approval on Derek and Jim's memo, page seven of eight. Architectural plans do not have title blocks that comply with administrative code section cited, so they should. Construction cost estimate for onsite improvements, including those subject to performance guarantee, be reviewed by the land use engineer in order to determine the amounts required. Following approvals may be required. Mercer County Planning Board, is that? Mercer County Planning Board, have any jurisdiction for this?
I don't think so.
I don't see how.
County, county, road, county, called.
Yeah, yeah, no. Okay. Mercer County Soil Conservation District.
Jim, you have more than 5,000 square feet of disturbance, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So that's required.
And then Delaware and Rhode Canal Commission.
It's a B zone. I mean, you know.
It's a B zone. They'll probably issue a letter that states that they don't have jurisdiction or they don't, they have no, but a finding of no interest.
Yeah, okay.
But you get a record.
Treatment Works approval from the Regional Surge Authority.
Yes.
Then need something from the sewer operating committee?
Yes.
Okay. And then, let me see.
A sewer operating committee that doesn't really exist as, with that name anymore.
Okay. I'm just looking over the summary, but I think we've covered pretty much everything.
It's very little here, Cherry.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's it. And just to go quickly through the memo from Elizabeth. Remember four of the units we've dealt with that, demolishing the structure we've dealt with that. Architectural plans indicate that the existing stairs will remain for unit 3B. And maybe this has been addressed in, in subsequent submission. When there were enlarged staircase will be created, one being another staircase for the remaining residential units. Is it possible to consolidate the staircase? One be an enlarged residential population to reduce the necessary floor area. So.
Has been addressed.
It's been addressed. Okay, is it on the plans now? Okay. Architectural elevation drawings, this might have been addressed too, indicate residential units will have balconies. However, they're not reflected clearly on the plans. Is that been addressed? Okay. Is it necessary to have another privacy fence on the west end of the row of north parking spaces, which I guess would be adjacent to a second fence?
Oh, that's a Jim question.
And can you clarify, Mr. Muller, which area you're speaking of?
Well, okay, I'll just read the comment. Is it necessary to have another privacy fence on the west end of the row of north parking spaces?
That, that would. Well, I think we would want to.
Garage. I'm sorry, excuse me.
Up against the parking garage.
Right. I think, I think the intent was just to provide some privacy to the green space from the parking stalls that would be otherwise visible, which we thought was a good thing.
Okay. Then the applicant should consider placing some of the climbing hydrangea near the north. Property line will augment what is proposed to soften the effects of new construction from the property. That's been done?
Well, let's see if the Landscape Subcommittee likes hydrangeas.
Yep. I personally like hydrangeas lots.
Oh, that's, that they're in then. They're in.
Okay. Larger trees be planted. We've talked about that. And I think that might be it.
Cherry, is that going to be actual direction the planning board's giving to the Landscape Review Committee? That, as Chair Wilson said, we'd like to see.
She doesn't like hydrangeas.
No, I love them, but I don't love all hydrangeas.
Not what I'm talking about.
I love.
Talking about shade trees, Michael.
I'm talking about wanting larger shade trees as opposed to smaller.
Yes, I think that, well.
I didn't weigh in on the hydrangea.
Cherry already included that as a condition.
The one large shade tree is probably in the middle of the front.
Right. Yeah.
Jerry?
Yes.
I have a question about the HPC memo. Can they be characterized as conditions or just recommendations?
Well, they're just recommendations. The only entity that can impose conditions is the board itself.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Then let's see. Okay, then existing, again, this is from the HPC memo. Existing fences near the north and west property lines appear to be owned by others. If these are intended to remain or are in good condition, the applicant should consider if installing new fencing so close to the existing is necessary. Jim, what's your response to that?
I can say that we can evaluate that and take it under advisement, coordinate with the neighboring property owner. And if it makes sense, then we can eliminate the second fence.
Okay, let me just jot that down.
Can you determine whether you'll propose to do one or the, or which, which of those approaches you'll take before you come to the Landscape Committee?
Right, yes, we can do that.
Mr. Chow?
I'm sorry, I'm a little slow here. The large shade tree issue. I, I just looked at the street view for the property and I think there is an opportunity for a large shade tree on the southeast corner next to the cops parking lot, given the elevation of, of the porch and everything. So I just want to put that out there as a consideration for the shade for the landscaping.
Well, maybe the best bet is just to say at least one shade tree. And then let's see what the Landscape Committee and Dan Dobromski can do.
Yeah.
That, that sounds okay. Okay, just almost completely finished. If the rooftop condenses will be visible from the right of way, screening should be provided. Okay, with the applicant? Or will they not be?
They're very high, but we'll be happy to work with the staff to determine that.
To determine whether they are?
We could, yes.
Okay. Just bear with me.
Here's something I thought about earlier. I don't think it'll end up as a condition, but I, I think it's worth checking out the nighttime lighting situation in the garage. There are other garages in town that I'm more familiar with at night that have bright lights on all night long. And nearby homes, I mean, if they don't have blackout curtains, I don't know how they sleep at all. So it might, it's just worth understanding what that situation is, maybe even ultimately working with whoever controls the lighting in the garage to dim them at night or something. I don't know. Just something to, to have on your radar because it could be a quality of life issue for the people in units that face the garage.
Okay. Then the last one is, was about lighting. Exterior lighting should be sensitive to neighboring properties. If LED lighting is proposed, it's recommended to be in the warm spectrum. But is everybody satisfied with, with the testimony that was given on what the lighting plan is? Yeah. Okay. So I don't think we need to put that in. So that's it.
Okay, it was moved by Mr. Cohen and seconded by Mr. Quinn. Are we ready for, and, and the conditions have been enumerated? Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Texardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. And thanks again for the electric heat. It really, it really is good to see. Okay, well, I, we have, thank, thanks again to all the folks here on behalf of the applicant and for all that you did to respond to comments from the staff and from HPC. And we're looking forward, I think all of us, to seeing this take shape.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is that okay if I ask a question?
Yes. Well, first you have to click on the raise hand. I'm just kidding. No, 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 no. Please, please go ahead.
Timer, please.
Yes.
Kidding. I'm kidding.
My question is, and hopefully I will hold it to three minutes, is.
We have, we have a new timer and we haven't had a chance to use it, so.
Right, right. So.
Dustin, let's roll that thing out just to try it.
My question is that there's been a lot of discussion of retaining the existing building and respecting street fronting or street visible features. However, the conflict between that and maintaining a minimum, I'm sorry, maximum 10 foot setback is extremely difficult to comply with. So the, our original interpretation was that if the new portion of the building is attached to existing portion of the building but set back, the fact that the existing building is already closer than 10 feet would satisfy the front setback requirement. But that was not the interpretation. So when we went to historic preservation, historic preservation was very much what we thought that by setting the new addition or new building back, it would be more respectful to the existing building and allow more of the preservation of the existing portions of the facade. But that would have triggered a variance. So any clarifications and thoughts on how to interpret that would be very helpful. And I hope I stayed with my, a lot of three minutes.
HPC was, was prepared to support a, a variance of that sort to allow for that to be at 11 feet instead of 10 feet. We decided to move it up just to comply, but you know, I guess the question is, would the board be interested in, in if, if somebody came to you with a variance by pushing the new building back a bit more than 10 feet, would the board be inclined in some, in the right case to allow that variance?
Well, but I also would like to say that when the two buildings are attached, they're not two separate buildings. So it is very strange to have measurements of front setback for one building measured in different locations. Normally, if you have a portion of the building already complying, that seems sufficient and that would actually be easier. So then the applicants will not have a non-conformity. But I, again, it is strange to have a separate measurement for an addition. But again, looking for your guidance.
Uh huh. Point taken. So before the board discusses, let's hear what Elizabeth Kim has to say. You've had your hand raised for a couple of minutes.
Yeah, I, I just want to address what Marina had brought up. And I appreciate you bringing that up, Marina, because as you know, from the HPC meeting, that was a big discussion. And I believe in the chair's memo, it talks about the fact that they would like to see this ordinance allow some flexibility for the historic building to be present and upfront if possible. And the addition, of course, be added, but hopefully setback if possible. So the, the historic portion of it could remain. So, but you know, that is an interesting question when you say when the addition is added to an existing structure. I guess it's still going to be considered part of it. And if they're saying that it's going to be 10 feet, then that is going to be, I guess, a violation. But again, as HPC looked at it, they would like to see if the existing structure is, let's say, nine feet. They would like to see the addition added slightly behind at least. So at least that historic building could have that presence there. So that's something that, there is a subcommittee that's looking at that ordinance, which I know that we had told David that there's going to be a subcommittee working on that just for them to go through the ordinance, because this is the second application that they've heard. And I think that they feel that there are some clarifications that need to be included in the ordinance itself, or at least for your board to, you know, know what those guidelines are for yourselves. And I guess the applicants coming in.
Yeah. The applicants always have that. I'm sorry.
So I do want to say that I think that this is partly, again, an issue relative to Nassau Street, you know, versus other, the 10 foot maximum setback. And Michael might actually also have.
And Michael might actually also have something to say about this. It was intended to create some kind of consistent street edge. And there are certain properties on Nassau Street, for instance, that are setback, you know, the building is setback 50 feet or 60 feet. And otherwise, you have this really nice consistent, you know, zero or 10 foot setback. And so those kinds of gaps create a real nasty planning situation. And that's what we were trying to mitigate. I think in a case like this, first of all, Tulane Street, you know, doesn't necessarily have that same kind of continuity of street frontage. And I don't anticipate that it ever will have in terms of, you know, zero side yard setbacks and buildings marching up and down the street. And I, and I agree with the comments, you know, from Marina and Elizabeth that being able to make the existing building more prominent and to not require, you know, not to, not to interpret this as saying that every every piece of the building has to be no more than 10 feet. You know, you want to have some articulation of a facade, even on Nassau Street, where we're trying to create a consistent street edge, you know, you're going to want to have the ability to do little entry courts or things like that, where, where you articulate the front a little bit. So I think it does make sense to have a little bit more flexibility and, and maybe we'll get some suggested language from HPC that will help you know, help, help make that more concrete.
Yeah, David, you're thinking exactly what I was thinking and how I was recalling our intent when we were talking about this ordinance. And certainly was more thinking about that, that streetscape, that street wall that we want to create on the eastern end of Nassau Street, where right now they're sort of dead zones, where there's gaps in buildings and buildings setback quite far from the sidewalk. So maybe for Tulane, you know, in that section of the AH1, we can think of some flexibility that we want to build. And I'd be a little worried about applying it to Nassau Street because we really don't want to have those gaps between buildings. We want to, we want to create that sort of, you know, vitality of having a tighter sidewalk area and people right up to the street and engage storefronts and, you know, engaging the street. So thanks, David. That was a good read.
As long as we leave space for things like Dome Alley. Okay, well, thank you. That was a conversation worth having. Elizabeth, you raised your hand again. Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Yes, just to talk about the, the properties and the overlay zone on Nassau Street. One of the things that the HPC subcommittee was talking about is in those situations, perhaps there could be like a prevailing setback standard that the properties could use. So you could have a consistency of streetscape for those parcels, perhaps where it's setback so far that there's kind of like this, this opening, then you want to kind of keep it consistent. So that was just something that they're going to probably be looking at and provide, presenting to the board.
Just, just keep in mind the difference between Nassau Street and like Tulane is that a lot of the storefronts in a traditional downtown, you would expect this are a zero setback. They're right up to the property line. So the 10 foot kind of made sense on Nassau. It still gave you some flexibility. I guess we just weren't thinking of it in terms of an application on a street.
You know, one of the other things that's, I mean, I'm just thinking of there's this really nice historic building next to, is it the Santander Bank? That has a little bit of a landscaped courtyard. It's recessed from, you know, the, the street frontage. And it's a really beautiful little occupiable space. It's landscaped. It's not a driveway, you know. So I'm not trying to prolong the discussion. I'm just trying to flush out where there can be, there can be some articulation of the street frontage.
David, that's an interesting example because I, we just found in our files and I gave to Elizabeth the photograph of, I think it was three historic houses that were torn down to make, lay for their courtyards.
Really? Great.
Three really beautiful buildings.
Right. And there, there's also the area in the Jug Town, which also is not the same as the section in downtown Nassau Street too, where you have properties that are setback from the street.
Yeah. And one further, if you're already forming subcommittees and discussing, there's also provision that multiple buildings are allowed on properties. So if there are multiple buildings, do all of them have to have? Because then that, that would be a problem if you have a building in the front and you're trying to be respectful and build a new building in the back, let's say in the parking lot. How is that at all possible for that rear building to be compliant with a minimum front setback that, that, right? That's completely impossible. So then that rear building is effectively automatically in violation. While that's exactly the type of infill that you would like to achieve, so. Kind of a complication.
Yeah, I mean, we did, we did discuss that also. I think that we talked about perhaps a minimal setback. And then if there's a a new structure that you want to add as a secondary structure on the building or multistructure, that that should be allowed to be closer to the streetscape to be consistent, but not necessarily blocking that building that you're trying to retain. But you know, these are all things that they were just looking at. And, and you know, again, Marina, that is one of the scenarios they were looking at, you know, there is that feeling that's setback, but you want to retain it. You want to at least have an opportunity for that land to be developed according to what the overlay zone is intended. So they're, they're not against that. They're just trying to make it all work out.
Well, good. I don't know whether it's typical in ordinance is, I don't think that it is to sort of address different types of scenarios, but to the extent that it can do so in order to make completely clear what you know, what, what's desirable, then I think that could be helpful. But I look forward to seeing what, what HPC comes up with and, and does that, would that go then first to ZARC before coming to the board? Is that something that would go to ZARC as well? Or we don't need to decide that right now, but it's something to think about.
I would think that would be appropriate to go to ZARC.
Yeah, I, I agree with Michael.
I was just going to say, Louise, that I think what you're describing, there's been some success in the past in using form-based code and some of the the drawings that Jim Constantine used in conjunction with ZARC actually, which was more effective and, and sort of signaling what was desired and, and more effective than words.
Yeah, yeah. Good. Okay. Great. Anything else? Mr. Cohen?
I'm ready to, to do my duty and make a motion to adjourn. Everybody else is ready to.
I'm so glad you're up to the.
I am, I'm prepared to second that motion.
Perfect. All right. Good talk. Thanks, everybody. Really appreciate the time and we will see you in two weeks.
Or everyone has to vote on the adjournment.
Oh, yes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I had a feeling that would be passed.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.